Good evening Upper Darby. Welcome to the combined work session, regular in-person and virtual meeting for January 10th, 2023. First item on the work session agenda is a pledge of allegiance by the kindergarten center students. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by the kindergarten center principal, Ms. Dina Williams, and assistant principal, Ms. Janine Mulberry called blinded me with science.
Good evening everyone. School board president Brown, school board members, superintendent Dr. McGary, cabinet members, faculty members, staff, students, and community members. I'm Dina Williams from the kindergarten center. And this year, for the first time ever in kindergarten history, we have added science curriculum to our kindergarten, which is absolutely remarkable. Our kids, our teachers are alive with science and we are blinded with science, but we are actually rolling with science. So I don't want to talk a whole lot. I want to be able to show you what's happening here at the kindergarten center.
We're really excited to have science this year at the kindergarten center.
We were excited because we've never taught science and the kids don't know a lot about that, you know?
They never really had exposure to a science curriculum before, especially since a lot of them never even had school exposure before.
Beth Riches and the team of science coaches, we were able to do a selection process where we looked at several different companies that provide elementary science programming. And we decided to go with twig science because it is very hands-on. It is aligned with the next generation science standards that Pennsylvania has recently adopted. It has been an absolute pleasure working with all of our kindergarten teachers, adding something new to their day this year. They have embraced science with such grace and such positivity.
I was a little nervous at first, but once I actually looked through the curriculum and I saw what we would be doing with students, and then once I actually started teaching it, I got excited because I saw the students getting excited.
We began science in October. We are in a physics module right now called marble run engineer and the students are learning about forces.
They started with just movement, general movement, pushing and pulling. And then we progressed to gravity and the kids got to experiment with a lot of different props. They dropped keys and a feather and saw the difference when they dropped things of different weight. They experimented with a grown-up shoe and a child's shoe hanging from a rubber band to see which one stretched the rubber band more. We also showed them a jar of honey dripping and talked about gravity and how it was always going to pour down into the cup.
Then we moved on to building ramps, which the kids loved using because they got to play a little game.
Students are learning about speed and direction and trying to control where their marble is going.
They have these little cups and the children dropped the marble down the ramp and they had to try to get it in the cup and scored 10 points. And they loved it.
As the culminating activity, students will be building a marble run. They'll become engineers.
They've been seeing the marble run box in the container in the classroom. So they're really excited to build this marble run activity.
They get to build like a huge tower.
And drop a marble from the top and see the movement through their creation.
So that would be a really exciting way to end our science unit.
The materials have been really great. It's great to see the kids engaging with hands-on materials. They've been really excited about that.
Students are learning incredible science content, but at the same time, they feel like they are really active.
There's very little area in our curriculum to be creative and hands-on and the kids love it.
And it's been a great opportunity for our students to practice a lot of social skills as well.
They get to collaboratively work together, cooperative learning. So they're socializing as well, but on task.
All of the science lessons encourage the kids to engage with each other, figure things out, problem solve.
It's fun to listen to them. If you listen to them like, no, I can't believe that happened. Oh my gosh. And it's so cool to see the conversation.
And it also ties in some of their other things as well.
It incorporates reading, it incorporates drawing. We can talk about mathematic concepts with it. Even during a different subject, we can talk about if you drop something, what happens to it, what's pulling it down, what's keeping it up and stuff like that.
So it's been a beautiful opportunity for us to really show that we're not learning in isolation. We're carrying these concepts throughout our kindergarten day.
It's a great way to introduce science to the children because they're going to be doing it once they move on to first grade. So it's a great way to get them excited about what's to come.
By capturing our students' natural curiosity and really providing another hook and something else exciting that's happening in school. We're going to have a lot of future scientists and engineers that graduate from Upper Darby High School and go on to do wonderful things for our world.
So thank you so much. There's a lot of really fun, cool things happening at the kindergarten center and it's really awesome seeing the kids being able to engage with each other and get creative and experiment with real-world science. So thank you so much. Thank you for letting me be the principal of the K Center too. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Williams for all your hard work. Kindergarten Center is in great hands. The final item on the work session agenda is recognition of the school board members by Dr. Dan McGary.
Good evening, members of the board. Board President Brown, Vice President Fields, member of the community. First, I want to acknowledge UDEA. Thank you for the dinner you provided the board this evening. It was delicious as we engaged in some healthy back-and-forth conversations prior to the meeting tonight. The dinner and the meal was much appreciated. January is Board Appreciation and Recognition Month, and that was the reason why UDEA historically has provided that meal. In the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, there are approximately 4,500 school board directors who represent over 500 school districts. Think about that, there were 4,500 Board of School Directors throughout the Commonwealth. In Pennsylvania, Board of School Directors are elected as volunteers. I cannot tell you how many times over my career I've had someone ask me how much a member of the board makes a year. When they find out that the position is a volunteer position that can consume countless hours of time, the next reaction I always get is why would anybody want to be on a school board? I know that the nine elected volunteers of this school board have demonstrated their why in the following ways, and these are just a few. New athletic complexes at the secondary level, new weight room at Upper Darby High School for student athletes, and new tennis courts. Commitment to the arts, new support staff, and improved facilities in these areas and ongoing improvements in those areas. School facilities projects that include new playgrounds, external improvements to blacktop concrete work, new bathrooms for schools, improved HVAC systems, commerce systems for improved security measures, keyless fob swipes for staff to get into schools, a new teacher contract, renovation and expansion of Aronomic Elementary School, renovation of 8201, and an upcoming facility study. And these are just a few of the larger improvements our Board of School Directors have made and asked of this administration. The level of volunteerism is considerable with at least two monthly meetings that are certainly not short on time. And preparation for two monthly meetings often includes several hours of agenda setting and planning each week, each week. The Upper Darby Board of School Directors has helped us steer this district through perhaps the most difficult and challenging period of time in public education in COVID-19 and the worldwide pandemic that started in 2019. It is something we continue to navigate to this very day. Throughout the pandemic, this board participated in weekly informational sessions with district administration, learning about plans to provide meaningful educational opportunities to students as well as plans to safely open schools and keep them open. The past three years have certainly been challenging, but the Upper Darby Board of School Directors has never, not one time, wavered in their why. They focused on providing the best to and for the families who trust us with their children. In a district that is underfunded by close to $20 million a year, this board continues to advocate, lead, and push for the best. Overall, the Board of School Directors' commitment to opportunity, unity, and excellence is among the best in the Commonwealth. And we thank you for your service to the community and the students. And as a token of our appreciation, I know that you heard about the UDEA providing you with a wonderful meal tonight. Maybe they want to do it each month, I don't know. Just kidding. And then UDAAS, there are a bunch of administrators in the room here, our Upper Darby Association of School administrators, have provided you with a wonderful gift, a bag with some treats in it. And they seem somewhat personalized, but I don't think that they're individualized for everybody, but that's for you. We also have certificates of appreciation that will give each and every one of you that you could take with you and get it framed, or you could put it on your fridge. But we certainly thank you and value your leadership and all that you do here for the school district. And I think it's important that even if it's just once over a 12-month period of time, that we recognize all the volunteerism in what you do. So a round of applause for the Board of School Directors. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, we humbly accept the gratitude and the thank you from everyone involved, from the meal tonight to Dr. McGary's kind words. We, you know, I can speak for the board. We all take it very seriously and we do our concerted best to do what's right for all of the students in our district. So thank you very much. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participation procedure, sir?
Yes, there are several ways members can participate. This evening is a legislative board action meeting. That's different than our typical agenda meetings for committee meetings. Tonight is comment only, and there are a couple of ways you can comment on specific reports or make general comments. If you were wanting to make a general comment this evening, you would have to have signed in on the list by 7:30 PM to make general comments at the conclusion of the meeting. The same goes for somebody participating virtually or via email, phone call or email. You would have needed to provide an email or a phone call to boardmeetingcomments@uprdrbsd.org, provide your name, address, and specifically if it's a general comment, write it or leave a voicemail and the board will take that into consideration at the conclusion of the meeting. Those who wanted to make a general comment, either virtually or in person, would need to do so by 7:30 as I stated, and we take in-person commenters first. Those who would like to comment on a specific report before the board takes action on a specific report, virtually, you can call in at 610-789-7200, extension 2000, or send an email to boardmeetingcomments@uprdrbsd.org, provide your name and address in either fashion, and specifically the report that you'd like to comment on. The comment will be read into the minutes before the board takes action. Anybody in person who would like to comment specifically on a report, the board will let you know, is there any comments from the board or any comments from the public at that time under that specific report? You can come to the microphone, provide your name, address, and you could comment on that report. All of these fall under a three-minute timeline this evening. I'm happy to give an update at any point in time if need be. Board President Brown.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. The regular in-person virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 PM until 7:30 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Present.
Mr. Desneuer.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Ms. Murphy Morrissey.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Thank you. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I think we had extra one in there. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The minutes of the combined work session and regular meeting of the reorganization meeting of December 6, 2022 are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The report of the secretary, Director Williams, please.
The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The treasury report, Director Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member, has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. We will now have the report of the student representatives, Salma Gorfa and Khalid Dulat.
Good evening, President Brown, Vice President Fields, Dr. McGary, and our entire school board. This past month, I had the chance to visit Aronomic Elementary School and experience firsthand what it takes to run a school that is within an active construction environment. Under Mr. Rehack's guidance and care, Aronomic has remained a fully functioning school with little to no noticeable hiccups. I was lucky enough to visit Aronomic the day that they had their reindeer romp, an event led by their head physical education teacher, Mr. Dunn. For this event, the students are allowed to dress up for the holiday season and are given bells to jingle as a romp around the school. It is through these events and activities such as the reindeer romp that you get to see the excitement and shared school spirit, vital parts of a good educational environment. Beyond the academic growth of each student, schools are also working on their social and emotional growth of the students. And events like this are small but important ways to allow that learning to take place. While the main school facilities are being sandwiched between two different construction zones presents obvious challenges, the students worked diligently to overcome any disruptions that might deter others from learning. Mr. Rehack and his team have worked very hard to make an environment that anyone can learn in while also keeping the safe and friendly school environment that families have grown accustomed to at Aronomic. One way the school has improved is by implementing smart boards into the classrooms equipped with plug-and-play technology, making it less daunting for teachers who are not as tech savvy. The smart boards have been a new way for teachers and students to react and connect with each other and the concepts and ideas being taught throughout the school days. As I walked through the school, visiting and seeing many different teachers and their classrooms in motion, I was surprised to see the work ethic and the ability to work independently at a level more like that of a high school student. While these skills and experiences have been hindered over the past few years because of the lack of social interaction in the classrooms, teachers across the district have been working together to bring the best aspects of the education to our students each and every day. Thank you, Mr. Rehack, for letting me experience such a wonderful school and thank you for your time.
Good evening, Upper Darby School District. Sorry. Good evening, Upper Darby School District Board, School District, School Board members and community. Over the last month, I was able to visit Westbrook Park Elementary School and speak with the principal and some of the teachers. When I walked in, I was impressed to see that the school was disability accessible with a classroom of each grade on the ground floor of wheelchair accessibility. I think this feature should be implemented in some of the other schools in the years to come. In my conversation with Mr. Comfort, the principal, concerning his goals for the school year, he discussed how he wanted to focus on the academic and social losses that the students experienced due to COVID. His goal was to continue to help them to adjust to being back in the building, which has been a common theme amongst all the elementary school teachers and staff, and they've been doing an excellent job at tackling this issue. Khalid and I were also able to visit the kindergarten center where we were able to speak with the building principal, Ms. Williams. According to Ms. Williams, the students have been doing a great job of adjusting to being back in the building with only a couple of students still in the virtual setting. Ms. Williams shared with us how she wants to get more community and parent involvement in the students' education while also mentioning that the current Home and School Association is doing a great job of helping to accomplish that goal. With the social and academic loss experienced due to the pandemic, kindergarten is a vital time for young students to build those skills that they may be missing. One of the ideas that the K Center has to combat the academic and social loss is bringing back a program they had pre-COVID in which middle school students from Drexel Hill Middle School would come to the kindergarten to read to the students. In addition to being a great opportunity for the middle school students to give back to the Upper Darby community, the program also highlights and promotes the importance of both reading and social interaction skills. As always, we were grateful for the opportunity to visit some of the schools across the district to see the amazing things taking place. Thank you for your attention for this month's school board report.
Salma and Khalid, thank you very much for those comprehensive reports. Let's give them a round of applause. The budgeted personnel and enrollment report had been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. Now we will have the report of the superintendent by Dr. Dan McGary.
Happy New Year. Board President Brown. Go ahead, it's good. Happy New Year to you. Board President Brown, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, members of the community of the Upper Darby School District. Thank you to kindergarten principal, Dina Williams. Dina, you're such a pleasure to have working in the school district. You're always happy and I appreciated that presentation. Mrs. Mulberry, you've been an awesome hire for the school district as well. I don't know if everybody really had a full chance. If you want to stand up and say, this is the assistant principal. Janine went through a very difficult, arduous process to get to this assistant principal's role and was so thrilled. It was moving the day that you found out you got the job, which moved me. I'll never forget that, but congratulations, what a team to the team of kindergarten teachers and the families that are here. It means a lot. That's the most important experience of any child's life is kindergarten. So thank you for what you're doing at the kindergarten center. This evening, I will somewhat briefly discuss the following. I'm going to provide an update on the sunsetting enclosure of Walter M. Senko Elementary School. We'll include some of the timelines, communication, and frequently asked questions, just how we're handling the frequently asked questions. A reminder of the budget and the budget timeline and celebration and recognition, which I think is why we have so many people here tonight, of the outstanding accomplishments of our students athletically and academically, recognition of the positive social and emotional programs we continue to implement in all of our schools throughout the district, and recognition of students who placed in the Upper Darby Township Fire Prevention Poster Competition. First, the sunsetting closure of Walter M. Senko. Just as a reminder, prior to winter break on December 22nd, a public hearing, a required public hearing, was held by the Board of School Directors regarding the sunsetting closing of Walter M. Senko Elementary School. During those discussions, there were some comments made by those in the public that we would not keep this going and keep communicating with everybody. Just to be clear, there is a comment period from January through March of 2023. Anyone can review the videos, review that presentation, it's on our district website. Feel free to comment to the board at WM SenkoHearing@uprdrbsd.org. Again, WM SenkoHearing@uprdrbsd.org. The comment period will be from January to March because it's required in the school code of a three-month comment period, and we'll take that all the way through the end of March and bring that information to the Board of School Directors. From those emails and those comments and the hearing that we held on the 22nd, we have put together a frequently asked question document. It's been posted on the district website today. We'll update that, continue to update that. There's about eight to 10 questions or comments that we've received so far and some of the common themes from the hearing that evening. It's on the website and we pushed that information out to all districts this evening at about 5:30. Thank you to Dr. Manfree for pushing that out. We are getting some feedback from the board as well and we'll make adjustments as we go. On April 11th in the timeline, the board will then take potential action on the actual closing and sunsetting of Senko Elementary School. All the while, we have coordinated meetings following the December 22nd meeting. Some of the parents that were in attendance that evening wanted to make sure that even if it didn't get voted on, or if it did, that we were having preliminary discussions with our home and school associations. So I want to say thank you to Dr. Manfree, Dr. Beglici who's here, Mr. Rehack, and the kindergarten center. We will be holding meetings with parents and really the first series of meetings will be a relationship meeting with the home and school associations from Aronomic and Senko. And we're going to have monthly meetings over some coffee to have discussions on how we can make this merger a successful merger along the way. So those communications have already started. Again, April 11th would be the date of board action, if the board will take action on this topic. After that, we've already had some staffing meetings with staff, but on April 12th, in accordance with this process, we will begin staff conversations with both Senko and Aronomic, finalizing all of those details. Again, from April 11th through August, all of the transition planning will take place, communications, meetings with staff, meetings with the public, meeting with students, making sure that the board does decide to take the administrative recommendation and sunset and close Walter M. Senko Elementary School and merge it with Aronomic, that we have a complete timeline and clear communication about how we'll be handling this. Again, emails can be sent or comments can be sent to WM SenkoHearing@uprdrbsd.org. We'll collate those comments and questions and post them on a frequently asked document on the website and continue to publish that for everybody here in the district. Budget reminder and timeline. The board passed a resolution on December 6th to adopt an accelerated budget opt-out. As a result, the district administration will not be presenting a preliminary budget because the board has already decided to keep any potential tax increase below the adjusted index. Again, we are a significantly underfunded district and each year we are forced to balance a budget with local taxpayer funding. The district administration will be providing information over the next several months on the budget prior to the board taking any action on the final budget. I wanted to remind the board and the public that we will be asking for the adoption of a preliminary final budget on May the 9th with the anticipated final budget approval on June 20th, 2023. Again, there will be discussions and conversations between all of these, but we wanted to make sure that the public and the board is fully aware of our timeline for a final adoption of the budget. We have also taken into consideration this past month, all staffing requests from all departments in the school district. We're processing through those staffing requests and we'll be sure to make those requests available to the board and the public. It's typically the case each year, however, what we do need in staffing to staff our schools, we can't afford. Nonetheless, Board President Brown and Vice President Fields, you have requested what it would look like to get us to where we would need to be if we were funded appropriately, and we'll certainly bring that information to your attention, to the public's attention. Now for why I think everybody really wanted to be here, although I appreciate you humoring through that information. It's important stuff. Student awards and recognition. First and foremost, the Upper Darby Township Fire Prevention Poster Contest. Francis Baker won for the Upper Darby Township 2022 Fire Prevention Contest for the kindergarten. Congratulations, Francis. Stay right there. Riley Grace Fullerton, if Riley Grace is here. Westbrook Park Elementary School for winning the Upper Darby Township 2022 Fire Prevention Contest for the first grade. Congratulations to Riley. Autumn Elise Mullin, is Autumn here? No. Westbrook Park as well. Second grade student for winning a poster contest for the Upper Darby Township Fire Prevention Poster Contest. How about Rishwara Baharavista? No. Of Primus Elementary School for winning the Upper Darby 2022 Fire Prevention Contest for third grade. Nathan Tavares of Bywood Elementary School. Nathan's a third grade winner from Bywood Elementary School for the Fire Prevention Poster Competition. Nakia Wilder of Highland Park. Renea Laffdali, Stonehurst Elementary School. Fifth grade award winner, Ruhi Rout, the kindergarten center, as honorable mention. Oh my gosh, how cute. So those are all of our fire prevention. I just want to give a compliment to our fire chief, Derek Sawyer. Continues to build a wonderful partnership with the Upper Darby School District, not only in these types of projects, but also with our athletic programs and with our teachers and our staff. So compliments to Chief Sawyer and to the students. Congratulations to your families and to the students. Thank you very much. I know, cute. This next recognition is for the American Invitations. This is important. Really fancy stuff here. American Invitations Mathematics Exam. I know I've got mathematicians up here. So as I understand it, I've done some homework on this James Pagan. I don't know if James was able to make it here tonight or not, but James is a student at the high school who, from what I'm gathering and finding out, has a pure love and passion for math, so much so that he practices constantly completing very difficult math problems after school, during school, working with other kids. And the math teachers and the teachers of the gifted students here in the school district have shared with us, Ms. Burns, that he have shared with us, Ms. Burns, that he is just amazing. So much so that James of our high school qualified in the top 5%, 5% of those taking this American Invitations Mathematics Exam and qualifying for the next level, which is really, really a prestigious, prestigious recognition. So, James, I'm sorry that you weren't able to make it tonight, but we'll get ahold of you and get a picture and give you your award tomorrow. So, thank you for representing the school district. Upper Darby High School Student Athletic Achievement. I hope Nadir Myers is with us because I read this over the break. Nadir scored his 1,000th point recently, which is a huge achievement here in Upper Darby High School in basketball against Ridley High School. So, congratulations to Nadir. I don't know if Nadir was, he's probably playing a game right now. He's got a game, yeah. But I do see someone present with us that I've witnessed on the football field who's an outstanding, outstanding football player, in my opinion, could have gotten more carries, maybe should have gotten more carries in his career. But LeVar Jackson's with us of the Upper Darby High School. This is pretty impressive. Selected as the Pennsylvania Mile Split Track Athlete of the Month and for ranking number one in the state at the high school 60-meter sprint event in track and field. And now, there are a lot of adults in the room who deserve a lot of credit for this. In particular, I know Dr. Beglici's now an elementary school principal here in the district, but back in the day, put a lot of pressure on him, a lot of healthy discussions on trying to pull off PBIS in the school district. I won't bring up Swiss with you tonight. That's a sore subject, yeah. But over the career here in the school district, we were one of the first school districts to be a PBIS Positive Behavior Intervention Support System. And we would like to commend and celebrate our schools that have been recognized by the Pennsylvania Department of Education for our continued implementation of positive behavior supports, PBIS systems here in the Commonwealth. The schools that have been recognized have received a banner and an award sticker to be displayed in the main areas of their school. Our Director of Pupil Services, Dr. Yurson, continues to lead the initiative with the support of Dr. Manfree, Mrs. Simone, Mr. Marshallak. It's a total team effort here in the school district to see this through. And many of our schools and elementary schools were honored and recognized at an event in Harrisburg this past December. Several of the Upper Darby school districts have received notable distinction from PDE in the past, so if you don't hear their names today, it's because they, not that they haven't in the past, but they have. But this evening, we're going to recognize the most recent award winners. Each school is recognized based on their implementation of a multi-tiered system of support in a three-tiered system. Simply put, how well do you do in a classroom? Do you need extra support to get it back on track outside of the classroom? And how much extra support do you have before it becomes a punitive system? And we have one of the most recognizable programs in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So much so that Beverly Hills Middle School, if that team wants to come up and get recognized...
Thank you, Dr. McGary. President Brown, Vice President Fields, members of the school board, community, and staff. We had two schools, one of them being Beverly Hills Middle School, who were recognized at all three tier levels. And they were the only two schools, and I'll mention this other school momentarily, in the county who were recognized at this level. So, kudos to you guys. Our other school that was recognized, excuse me, at the levels one, two, and three was Garrettford. If Garrettford team could come up and join Beverly Hills. And again, and Aron, if you want to give them their awards. In the eastern side of the state, there were only 20 schools that were recognized at this level, zero others in Delaware County. I think it's pretty prestigious and wonderful work that they're doing. And we'll go through the other schools as well. Recognized at the levels one and two, and if you guys could all come up, Charles Kelly Drexel Hill Middle School. And Westbrook Park Elementary School. And the schools that just came up were already recognized at the tier one level and they have, again, met the criteria to be recognized at the tier one and two level. Next, if we could have the K-Center, they were recognized for sustaining the fidelity at the universal level. And then our final three schools are all being recognized at the universal tier one level and they will be receiving their banner in this nifty canister up here that Dr. McGary will be passing out. Our first school is Bywood Elementary School. That's my fault, I had already opened that one, so the lid was a little, I wanted to see what was inside. Our next school is Stonehurst Hills Elementary School. And our final school being recognized this evening is Walter M. Senko Elementary School. Congratulations to all of our schools. You guys have done an amazing job. Again, I opened all of them to see what was inside. You're free, congratulations. Really impressive work here in the school district. And again, it speaks to why the school board is so important here in Upper Darby. You are relentless in your expectations of what you want from the school district. And to the leadership team in those schools who are getting ready to go home, which is important because they've got to get out of tomorrow.
I just want to say before they exit the room, thank you. We have a great district and it's certainly in great hands with all these wonderful leaders. So, thank you for all your hard work on behalf of the school board.
So, Board President Brown, members of the board, school directors, and the community, thank you for the opportunity to lead this district and do this very important work. As you know, we're very dedicated to the administration, the staff, and without question, the talented students. And this concludes my report for this evening.
Dr. McGary, thank you. You should be proud of all of the schools that were up here. That's under your leadership. So, thank you for all your hard work. We will now have an update on the December 20 Education and Pupil Services Committee Meeting. Director Williams, I believe, will read the summary.
We had two items on that agenda that evening. One was the annual district data review, which was informational. And we also had a Keystone Exams Winter Administration Window Agenda Item, which was also informational. The first item, the district administration provided an overview of the 2022 Pennsylvania State Assessment Data. The presentation showed district trends and an analysis of standards in the tested subject areas, and it was based on the assessment results. Again, this item was informational only. The second item, which was the Keystone Exams for Winter, Dr. Kelly presented the annual Winter Keystone Assessment Window, the testing requirements, and information for parents and guardians. Again, this item was informational only and there were no public comments this evening, that evening. That concludes the summary.
Thank you, Director Williams. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs as always. And now we'll have an update on the December 20, 2020 Finance and Operations Committee Meeting. Director War Savage will read the summary.
Thank you very much, President Brown. That evening, we only had one item on the agenda for the evening, and that was to discuss transportation technology updates, and that will end up requiring board action. District administration introduced two technology improvement initiatives in the transportation services. Mobile Data Terminal, or MDT, will increase operational efficiencies and improve parent communication by tracking employee time and attendance, displaying updated routes, tracking and reporting student ridership through the parent app, and documenting pre-trip inspections. On top of that, providing turn-by-turn directions. Transportation also plans to upgrade the bus, upgrade the bus video camera system itself. The new system will drastically improve the video quality and also allow for wireless downloading of the footage. There was one piece of public comment, but as President Brown had mentioned, all that and more can be found in Board Docs.
Thank you, Director War Savage. And now the Instruction and Curriculum Report, Vice President Fields.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye. Abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carried. And now the Personnel Report, Director Mitchell.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I would like to congratulate our two retirees, Karen Bulley for her years of service and hard work managing the payroll in the district, and to James Fergelli, who is a bus driver, for his years of service. Both have served the district since 2011 as faithful employees and we appreciate you. I also want to recognize those who are being appointed tonight for professional appointments. We thank you for meeting the needs of our student in this district. Although some of you are coming in mid-year, we welcome you to the Upper Darby family. I also do want to recognize the change in professional status to those employees meeting the criteria for Pennsylvania Active Tenure. Congratulations. And with that, I move for the adoption of this report.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye. Abstain, and state your name for the record. The Supplies Report, Director War Savage.
The Supplies Report has been made available to the public and to the board. I move forward with its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye. Abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The Transportation Report, Director Williams.
The Transportation Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye. Abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye. Abstain, and state your name for the record. The Finance and Budget Report, Director Dr. Haig.
Thank you, President Brown. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye. Abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carried. And now we will have the collateral assignment reports. We will start with Delaware County Community College, Vice President Fields.
Thank you, Board President Brown. Just a brief update, we were scheduled for a meeting December 7th, it got canceled. Yeah. But the board liaisons have a new chair, Shelley Hunt from Rose Tree Media. School Board will be, now be the Chair of the DCC Board Liaison Committee, so congratulations to Shelley. And Shelley will be guiding us as we go through a process again to fill a vacancy on the Community College's Board of Trustees. And that's just a process where we interview different candidates. If you're interested in serving on the Community College's Board of Trustees, go to the Community College website and take a look. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Director Fields. The DCIU, Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. It'll be brief because it was a brief meeting. We voted on regular business at last week's regular business meeting. Tomorrow night is the committee meeting. I have not received the formal connection from the DCIU. As soon as I do, I will forward it to all board members, but there was really nothing significant that we voted on at the last meeting that pertained to the Upper Darby. It was just normal business for the DCIU. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. The Legislative Council Meeting is tomorrow morning, and we're going to make sure we are diligent in sharing with the public what's going on in that meeting. So, we're going to get minutes together from that meeting and we're going to put them on Board Docs even before, even before we present a summary of that at the next meeting. We're going to make that available on Board Docs. So, that's something new that we're going to incorporate. So, Director War Savage, we're going to work on that. Mendenhall Tyson, Director Dr. Haig.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Home and School, Director War Savage.
Thank you very much, President Brown. I know Dr. McGary is going to work on scheduling the next district home and school meeting. I do know that all board directors should have by now received an invitation to each of their individual schools' home and school meetings. I know for me, I will be meeting with our friends in Aronomic on Thursday, and then the following Wednesday, I will be meeting with our Highland Park fam for their home and school meeting. I will also be coming prepared to the district home and school meeting with some ideas that I've been mulling over on how we can collectively support all of the home and schools celebrating not only their students and the families, of course, but also the administrators and the faculty that teach in each of those because we want to celebrate each and every one of you. It might take us a little bit of time this year to get around to it, but I'm committed, as is the board, to make sure that you are properly recognized and feted.
Thank you, Dr. War Savage. I'm not sure if all board members received invitations to the home and school meetings for the individual schools, so maybe we can check on that. I do have something on my calendar for the district home and school, which is tomorrow at 7 o'clock, I believe, but I haven't, you know, received something for my individual schools as of yet for their home and school.
I can definitely follow up with that.
Technology, Dr. McGary. I'm going to put you on the spot here, quiz you since you're our guy. Hotspots, are we still giving those out and how, and I see our Director of Technology is here as well, so maybe we can find out.
Yeah, we're still giving them out, but Ms. Zulinski's here. We're not giving them out at the same clip or the same rate that we were during the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. Only reason I ask, I was at a community meeting and someone said that the families don't have access to internet access, and I said, well, if they're district families, they have the ability to request that. So, kind of pushed back on that, just wanted to make sure that I was speaking with confidence about that.
Yeah, it's definitely true. And I think, you know, as we get through where we are, it should be a good reminder to keep pushing out, not to feel comfortable that, you know, we're through this lull, that people might... that people might still need that support. So we will continue to put out communication, and we provide those resources.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. McGary, and thank you, Mr. Linsky. PSBA, I know they have some school board related meetings coming up for school directors, so...
Yeah, I don't think I've received an invitation. I can check with PSBA.
Okay, or you can just probably go to their website and see if they have something, but they normally promote those very well. They have them for new school board directors, existing school board directors. They even have advanced training, so thank you.
Yeah, so I'll check on that and make sure I attend.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Desnoyers.
Board President Brown?
Yes.
I'm not sure why, but I did receive in my email the Liaison Digest. I'm not quite sure why. But I did want to bring to the board's attention that the new COSSBA, which is basically the new national organization, the registration is now open for the conference, and I just wasn't sure if this board was going to be sending attendees to that conference in April. But I believe the registration is open at this time, and it might be a good opportunity to get a national perspective.
Yes, I do...I think that is the intent for our board, at least from our perspective, to have a representation. And I...Mr. Rogers, I think you always budget for representation for us at that conference, right? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I think that the registration has to be addressed sooner than later. And also, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention to put on your calendars, to save the date for Advocacy Day. It is April 18th. And again, I'm not sure why I received this digest, but it was helpful for this meeting tonight, so...
No, that's perfect. That's good. Stay on that list.
So April 18th, if everyone could put that on your calendar.
Yeah. And we'll be talking about that in more detail moving forward, but thank you for that. Policy Liaisons, Director Desnoyers or Director Neal, anything to add?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay. Communication Directors, Mitchell and Dr. Haig.
If you are attending here for the first time tonight, you can sign up on our website to receive the monthly school board updates, and it is available on the School Board tab, I believe, and you can sign up under there. So if you want to get our monthly update, it's sort of like a digest of what happens at these board meetings and at the committee meeting, and some highlights of things that are going on in the schools that are of interest to the community. And anyone's welcome to get those digests.
Yep, thank you. And thank you for your work, Director Mitchell and Director Dr. Haig, on that, working on the communications in that digest. From a board perspective, I know it can be overwhelming with the amount of information that's on our website and probably the information you receive, so that gives you like the salient points of what's going on in our district from our perspective. So thank you for working on that. The Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation, Director Murphy Morrissey is celebrating her honeymoon right now, so we're going to give her a pass on that report. So we'll have something at our next meeting on that. Is there any old business from board members?
Just real quick, it went by so quickly, but I did want to acknowledge the two people on the donation report. One gave winter hats, gloves, and to Stonehurst Hills Elementary School, and that was the Upper Darby Professional Firefighters Association. And I know that's always a really big event. And then there is something listed on here that it looks like a family gave holiday presents to students at Gare for Elementary School. And I just want to acknowledge the community sacrifice when they give to the students. I know it's well appreciated by the families. Thank you.
Thank you for detailing that. They deserve the acknowledgement, and thank you for their generosity. Any other old business from board members? Dr. McGary, you look like you have something.
I don't know if my dad would appreciate being referred to as old business, but I want to say that to the Board of School Directors, he would appreciate that joke. But to the Board of School Directors, to the entire teaching staff here in Upper Darby, and the administrators, the amount of support my family has received and I personally received from all of you over the last couple of days has been moving and appreciated, especially the board and the administrators here in the district. So I appreciate your support. It's not lost on me, and the Upper Darby Police Department as well, for an escort for my dad's services yesterday was a big deal. So thank you for your support and the school district's support for a very difficult period of time for my family. Thank you.
So the board was happy to support you and express our condolences and be there for you, but I just wanted to state also, your eloquence in eulogizing your dad was very powerful and moving, so thank you for your strength, and you certainly honored him in a great way. So I'm sure he was...he's looking down and very proud of how you honored him, so thank you for doing that. That was awesome. Happy I was there to witness that. Any other old business from board members? Is there any new business from board members?
President Brown, I do have one piece of new business. You might actually be able to contribute to this. We were...it was very short notice, but I do know that members of the community were invited to something having to do with the reformation or the restoration or completion of the juvenile detention center of space, or whatever that ends up being called. I ended up not being able to participate directly, but I was thankfully able to watch someone's live feed who was in the audience. And I do know that you were physically there. I just want to bring to the attention of the public that these conversations are going on, and it is an important piece in terms of how it is we address some of the challenges when it comes to dealing with the circumstances that our youth find themselves in and how we must respectfully and transparently respond to that in a restorative way. There was only one meeting, and it was roughly an hour, hour and a half. I didn't see the whole thing, but I'm really encouraging the public to reach out to the county and to request more meetings specifically in this community, because it is important that we continue to have these important conversations and that we get all stakeholders' input, because it actually wasn't that long ago that in another area in this state, there was an unfortunate circumstance where there were kids being purposefully sent through the court system, and people were unfairly profiting off of that. And that only recently, probably according to my personal research, only resolved itself within the last roughly two to three years after said individuals who engaged in that program actually tried to appeal some of what they were found responsible for. So I just want to make sure that this area gets it right the first time. Mr. Brown, or President Brown, did you want to contribute anything you might have come away from with that meeting?
It was an interesting meeting. Superintendent David Erizari represented the Juvenile Justice Facility that's going to be built. He did want committee to input. He's visiting, he's on like a listening tour, visiting different areas. They do want to...the audience wants more representation from Upper Darby, and they want, you know, a larger space to have that meeting and get more input and people's thoughts on it. So I did...he did give me his business card. We did exchange emails. I encouraged him to email Dr. McGary and engage our superintendent to talk about any subsequent meetings or even using our facility for a larger audience. So that's what I encouraged him to do, but I thought the meeting had good potential. I learned some things, but it was very good, and I look forward to the next engagement and dialogue on that. Thanks. Any other new business from board members? Okay, hearing none. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby school district residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with Policy 903, the time allotted for general comments, both in person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour.
Kyle McIntyre, 10:40 JuxWath. I'm going to be brief tonight. I don't have much. Just one quick thing. It's actually a language update for policy. Currently, the HIV policy for the school district, the wording's a little out of date. Currently refers to students as an infected student. The correct terminology would be a student with HIV or AIDS. So it's just a request to the school board to obviously just update that terminology from an infected student to a student with HIV. I don't blame the school board. It's an old policy. Just the language just needs to be updated. So that's it. If you want to copy, this is the policy I'm referencing.
I'm back. I missed a couple months, but I really appreciate all the time because you, I know, are here because you have a vested interest in Upper Darby quality public education. So I feel I'm not wasting my time coming, giving historical perspective based on personal experience since 1981. A mother, 2104 Green Hill Road. I forgot that.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Anyway, so my kids both all went through Upper Darby school system, Bywood, BH, and Upper Darby. But...and I've been giving you a history of my side of the township, very different, and I want you to see what's happened. Now, I know the 18 years at Glen Olden is going to be over, and now we're going to be bused to another school not in our neighborhood. Won't take quite so long to get home, but there is traffic. So basically, we've been a school without a home for approaching 50 years. And I'd said, you know, my kids, we finally got Bywood for...they said 10 years, and we made it much more than 10 years. From then, they did the Glen Olden thing. But we were at Glen Olden...we were at Bywood for not very long when it became overcrowded. So to get an addition, I'm glad to hear some people are going to home and schools, but we happened to...my husband was the liaison person. We asked the Upper Darby school person to come that he was liaison with, and the whole school board ended up coming to our home and school meeting, when we had no library, no art room, no music room, okay? And Teresa Fury, this is how long ago, was the president of the school board. Her kids went there. And what happened is they started hearings, and we got an addition. And at those meetings about the addition, the school board had actually paid for a study, and it showed that there was going to be a population bulge. I brought that to the meeting, and someone in the audience raised the things, why just two stories? Why not three? Well, we've got an addition, and my kids were out, but then there were portable classrooms, okay? Now I drove past there, and there are four, I think five, classrooms on the property, okay? I've never seen a portable classroom at Aronamic, I'm sorry to say. So my point is, we need a school. And I was thinking, why not add on to the two schools that are there, Bywood and Hill...I can't think of the other one, but Stonehurst, and do a wonderful addition there and take away those portable classrooms? And that would allow students to go to school at least close to their neighborhood. But like I said, I don't understand why that...why Aronamic gets this huge addition for our kids now to be bused over there, when in fact, you could have added on to both Stonehurst and Bywood and leave the kids in their own community.
So I just...just to respond, and I'll let Dr. McGary elaborate on, I was just going to say, there's space limitations on...like every school doesn't allow us to expand on it just because of space conditions. And we're also doing a facility study that's coming up that will...that's relooking at all of the requirements for educating our children in our district. But Dr. McGary, I'll let you jump in and elaborate on it.
I could talk to you after the meeting. There's a complete facility study that was done and an explanation as to why Stonehurst and Bywood can't have additions, but we could talk after.
I understand that. The reason I come is that I love my neighborhood. We live right behind the Y. We've been there forever. We're committed to the community. The Y actually even gave my husband and I a Mind Body Spirit Award one year. So we've community people. So I'm not here to complain. I'm here to inform, and I have unique information because I've been here all this time and not just heard about it. I was involved. So, you know, I know there are lots of explanations. I'm just saying, it appears that there's not a lot of equity in Upper Darby school district.
Okay, so Ms. Buford, are there any comments online and phoned-in comments?
No, sir, there are no comments online.
Okay. All right. I'm going to count to 10 silently in my head. Diamond going once. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you for coming, and thank you for your attention.